We will open our Board of Trustees meeting for February 27, 2023. Start with our call to order pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bartholomew?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Fowler?
Yes.
Parker?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
President Poznanski?
Here.
We have six present.
Let's move into our consent agenda. Can everybody hear me? Let us know, let me know if you can't. We'll start, we have our minutes, our council bills, vendor bills, and our meeting agenda. Is there anything that would like pulled out?
Can we just pull up the January 23 minutes? Just for clarification on what was updated at the table?
The item that was updated, my apologies again for that. Let me just head it. Was item under new business B and C. Were omitted from the draft that you did receive and is now in there for the meeting. Notes I have. New items B and C.
Any other comments for minutes? Okay. Any, I do need to do a change to the agenda. We're going to take out the special presentation. With the road conditions, decided not to come. We'll postpone it till next month, see where we are. So no presentation tonight. Save us a few minutes.
Can we move item 10G from new business up to unfinished business? That was an item I had requested to be on last month's agenda and I wasn't present to completely address it. So I'd like it under unfinished if we can.
Okay. Move G up to unfinished D?
Yes.
Anything else?
I'd like to add a, under new business then, presidential salary.
So?
So that becomes H now? Well, G went away.
Okay, well, G went away, so H, whatever.
Anybody else? Anything else? Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? With the changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as changed.
Support.
Do you literally want the, do we need to say the amount of money? Or since it's in here, we're good? Okay.
It's all an occurrence in the consent agenda? That is fine?
Go ahead and call it.
Edwards?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries, 6-0.
Okay, moving on. No special presentation, no correspondence. We go into public comment. Again, we're going to keep this to our three minutes. You are welcome to comment about anything. Chicken wings, the weather, have at it. Public comment. There's a video online where a council literally had someone stand and talk about chicken wings for five minutes.
Filibuster.
Hi. Got my timer set?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Kellogg, 140 Tilsen. I'm here on behalf of Nolan Care, who submitted a letter of interest to the president in December and has a genuine desire to be part of this board. I've known Nolan for a couple of years now. From my experience and that of many others, I can tell you this is a young man who has a heart of gold and wants what is best for this community. When most men his age are focused on worldly things, Nolan spent countless hours and his own money to start a nonprofit charity called Miracle &amp; Tilsen. He spends a majority of his free time taking calls from people who are struggling to pay their electric or bills, pay for medicine, put food on the table for their children, not to mention help struggling families make the holidays memorable. He gets calls and requests from desperate families all year round. You may not hear it publicly, but the need in our area is greater than some of us may know. And he has been a lifeline to so many. Last holiday season, he spent countless hours packaging, shopping, making meals, coordinating deliveries, and so on. You wouldn't have believed all the work that went into that. It was truly incredible. In 2022 alone, he helped over 50 families in our community. A total of 110 children and elderly just in our Romeo area. He doesn't get a thing out of this charity. He gets no money, he gets no benefits, absolutely nothing. His only motivation is helping others who are not as blessed as you and I. His actions mean something and they are not just words. 110 people, that's a lot of people to help in a month. Mr. Fowler, when I talked to you last December, you expressed how much you like Nolan. And you told me that he did such a great job in the planning commission. So I'm a little perplexed at why you're not supporting him. Ms. Russell, I remember back in the fall when you so passionately talked about the children of this community and the safety concerns you had. I can't agree more, I'm a social worker as well. It is also critical to make the children a priority when it comes to their wellbeing. Being part of a community and a board that wants to make a difference is a powerful thing. I think you and Nolan would have a lot in common. And as you stated, you want to collaborate with others based on actual actions. Ms. President, not saying you are, but please don't assume that Nolan would be your opposition. There are many times he will agree with you and there will be times he won't. That is what makes a healthy board. Accepting the challenge of thinking outside of yourself will ground you as a leader. It will help you in the future and it will push you to think critically, even more so than you may have in the past, ensuring that you've thought everything through, every angle honestly and critically. I understand board responsibilities are not just about helping others.
I apologize, your three minutes are up.
I'll yield by three minutes.
Two sentences.
I'll yield by three minutes.
You don't have three minutes, sweetie.
Yes, Zach gave Russell three minutes about four or five months ago.
I have like 10 seconds, I promise. The voters wanted Nolan, his actions speak for himself. He has experience on boards in many other areas and he will bring a different lens to this board. Please do not reject this young man who only wants to help this community. Thank you.
Going once.
So my name is Mark Majoris. I live at 213 Pleasant Street. I've not been at the last few meetings. I had other commitments, but I was able to see at least a portion of the last meeting. And beginning this meeting, I'm hearing some other discussions relative to addressing a controversy that's been introduced into our community as a consequence of people not respecting the desires of the people who have voted in our community. We have three people that were voted, the top three, to take the positions up there. One of those chose not to take that position. And because they chose not to take that position, because there was a better opportunity for them, and they were running for, and they are now our president, they have vacated that opportunity. And the people in the community cast their votes for the top three people, at least they had that opportunity, that they wanted to have fill the positions. And if one of the top people chose not to take that, then the person who was in fourth, they obviously were requested by the remainder of the community to be the next in line. Why have we introduced the controversy? And we have people being recommended for a position that has already been voted on by the people? We have a national government right now that wants to pack our courts because they don't like the way the courts look. And now we want to do something other than what the people want and other what is set in place in electing people and putting somebody else in their place at the whim of the people in charge who may have a majority rule right now. The people have chosen the top four, five. The other people who have been recommended, I heard a letter was read last month by James Rosso, is it? Suggesting it's Sharon Smith. Did Sharon Smith run? Did you, were you one of the top four?
I was just below home.
Okay, so there you go. So if you can't win, then you shouldn't be appointed at the whim of somebody else. Anybody else who was being, asking to be appointed, if they didn't bother to run, why would they even be considered except we have a little bit of perhaps, not transparency, but cronyism going on? I heard a lot of transparency the last election cycle. I'm not seeing it now.
You have 15 seconds.
Thank you very much for that. So I'm suggesting that with integrity, you'll do what's right rather than what suits you best. Thank you.
Back to Fowler. But I echo what Mark said. Hi, my name is Joe Kellogg, 140 Tilsen Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of Nolan Care to be nominated and approved for the open trustee position and the 509 people who voted for him. Before I begin, can any council member tell me how or tell all of us how you attained the position that you currently hold? Okay. Well, I watched the last January board meeting on this topic, listened to the motions and arguments regarding the nominees mentioned, and it's apparent there's really only two arguments being made. Number of votes and nominee qualifications. I can go on and on about Nolan's impressive qualifications, but except for being an elector in the village, the person's resume really doesn't matter. The only real thing that matters is votes. And the number of votes a candidate received determines who wins the seat. Our voting system is based on plurality, not personal preference or political favoritism. And during the '22 election, Nolan Care received 509 total votes, more than any other candidate not seated before us. On this issue, the people have spoken. Now, to Mr. Fowler, Mr. Parker, Ms. Russell, and Ms. Poznanski. In the past two years, you've spoken that you are for the residents, and I believe that. And some of you even campaigned on it last fall. For example, Mr. Fowler, you had a sign that said a voice for you. Well, are you going to be our voice? Ms. Russell, you say you're for the residents. We're putting our faith in your integrity, that you'll represent us. Ms. Poznanski, you stated that you were committed to listening to the village residents and prioritizing their needs. Are you going to prioritize the needs of the 509 people that voted for Nolan Care? To me, the debate is over. The qualifications may differ, but there's one undeniable fact that each of you on this board have in common. You're there because you received the most votes. Nolan Care has earned the right to be a trustee on this council by having the highest vote count to fill the vacancy. Now's your opportunity to truly serve the residents of this community. Will you speak for and honor the 509 residents who voted for Nolan Care? That's the question for the day. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Zach Fowler, 319 Dickerson Romeo.
You have three minutes also.
Thank you. Yes, I am his current trustee, his top vote getter. Nolan Care is a decent candidate, so is Sharon, so are the other candidates. What I look at is the person's experience as far as a trustee, and that's the reason for my nomination. Nolan's time will come. According to the last election that Christine Malzone was president, I think Mr. Parker was the fourth top vote getter. And she selected Mr. Seidel, who had not registered. So there goes your theory of the fourth person getting the position. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
You don't have to answer. I mean, this really isn't a go back and forth. This is a meeting.
What does the law say regarding qualifications? What does the ordinance?
We are following the law, sir. If there's no more public comment, are there any more public comments or we're closing public comment at this time? Okay, let's close public comment. Okay, officer reports. Let's see. Let's slow it down a minute and let's all take a breath. And I wanted to start off with having a moment of silence for our fellow Michiganders over MSU. We have a lot of students in our community that attend there. We have a lot of, we have people, friends, it's their alma mater. We have, Oxford happened last year. We have a scary pandemic of sorts happening in our community. And I want to take a moment to take a breath, have a moment of silence. With that, I also learned of the passing of a fellow village president over in Armada Township, Marvin Wollock, last week. So I would like to include him in this moment of silence. If we could all just take a moment, take a breath, and think of those in their time of need right now. Okay, thank you for that. And let's just thank God that we are able to be here and to have these arguments with each other. Okay. First of all, I wanted to start off, I had neglected a welcome last month. We have a new DPW worker, his name is Jason, and he's been here since the beginning of January and he's been able to jump right in. He's doing very well. So welcome, Jason. Regarding our website, we have that little TextMyGov, if you've noticed, where we send out text messages. And if you go on the website, you see it pop up in and again and again and again. So I've contacted TextMyGov, we've taken care of that. So once you click on it, it goes away and does not return every five seconds. Yay. Next, we have our Community Shred Day. We're continuing in partnership with Bruce Township again this year, and we will be joint hosting two shred days. The first is coming on May 20th and will be paper shred only. On Saturday, October 14th, we will have the paper shred and electronic recycling. Both dates are from nine to noon and will be at the Parks and Rec parking lot here on Morton, right where we're at. And I wanted to say thank you to Bruce Township Clerk Susan Kraft for reaching out and keeping this community event going in this partnership between the two of us. I have attended my Michigan Infrastructure Council Asset Management Champion Program. My first class was on January 31st. It was a Zoom meeting. It was one of three that I must attend. So far this month, I've logged just under 10 hours of training and I have another five and a half of online training before my second class coming up here on March 6th. So just a few days. To say I'm learning a lot regarding assets would be an understatement. I am looking forward to this session where we learn how to put this knowledge into action. They actually train us how to use the program. Looking forward to that. Regarding the DDA, I attended the meeting this month on February 6th. I've included the DDA meeting minutes in the council packet for everybody. Also, if you notice at the back of it, all of the different board meeting minutes are in there just to keep us all up to date on what's going on in our, in our boards. We received an official letter from Chairman Zach Hayes of the DDA that they are ending the lease with the village regarding office space. That's also in your packet for information. I attended the workshop meeting that was held at the new offices last Wednesday, the 22nd. This was from six to eight. A special thank you to the Office Pub for graciously donating dinner for us. This meeting was attended by the full board with training provided by Kathy Dickens of the Ford County Community Foundation and also Dana Walker of the Michigan Downtown Association. The board is excited to start implementing some of the training and constructive dialogue was also held. The temporary alley closure will be open as of May 1st. The committee has decided that until a project is developed to permanently close the alley, it will not be asking for any more closures or extensions. Said extension.
March or May?
March. It ended at February 28th, so tomorrow it will be open on that. Okay. Apologize. Regarding the Ford Task Force, we had our monthly meeting, Task Force. Meeting. Not much new information provided, and with the nondisclosure agreements in place, I'm not really at liberty to share much anyways when I do find it out, so, sorry. But I did want to take a moment to congratulate the Town of Marshall on their exciting news of the new Ford site that they're receiving. This 1,900 acre mega site will provide stability and jobs for their community. Although disappointing that this was not us, and as we are trying to reimagine our site and we mourn the loss of Ford from our community, I wanted us to not lose sight and to express our support and happiness for our fellow Michigan community. It's a time like this, or our time will come, news such as this shows us that Michigan is continuing to be a state worth investing in. Around Village Hall, we have some new software. You might have seen it, it's our Documents On Demand. It's officially up and running. This platform allows us to scan and upload information onto our website for you to easily access. You can even sign up under the email tab to receive notifications when documents are uploaded. So for example, you would like to know about the planning commission agendas and board of trustee packets. You can choose to sign up for the, just those two items. And when we upload into that file, you'll be sent an email notification and a link that takes you directly to that document. So for now, we have started with all of the board agendas, minutes, and packets. We hope to expand the document offerings over time and to also have a link under each section that will take you to videos. We've also delved into our records organization. Catherine and Caroline are diligently working at that. Our shred pile is growing weekly. And this process is going to take us quite a few months. So a temporary screen wall has been put up to shield those that are having meetings up there from having to see our huge mess. First, you must tear apart before you put back together sometimes. Regarding our radar speed signs, Chief has informed me, we've received a contract from Moncombe County Roads regarding the placement of the signs in the right of way. We needed to have a permit in order to do that. And then a contract should something basically releasing them from harm. So currently, I am having our legal look over it. And should pending any issues with that, we would be signing and applying for the permit, purchasing the signs, taking next steps. I'll keep you updated should they not be up by next month. With our water rate planning group, we are meeting weekly now to stay on top of this change rollout. I have reached out to Parks and Rec to schedule two seminars to go over the new bill look and have a Q and A time. I don't have any dates set in stone as of yet, however, we've at least nailed down that it will take place in April. And we will offer a day and an evening time to try and accommodate as many resident schedules as possible. I did grab, we were trying to go decide the look of the bill. We're trying, going between a paper bill that will be folded into threes with the lower half ripped off, and you would send that in or you'd bring that in. Or even considering this, they call it like a press, an auto press. So it would come like this and you would rip off the top part and the bottom is the envelope. So basically, we are pricing out everything. I want to know, we need to know the difference between the paper, that we would need to be supplied if that's a different cost. And then we have the machines. If we choose just a regular page, we would need a tri-fold and envelope stuffing machine. And for this specific heat press one, you need a machine that does that. So trying to find the cost of that. Apparently, our rep let us know that a local community no longer uses this type and he's going to reach out to them and see if they'd be willing to sell their machines. So see if we can get a deal on that. We're pricing that all out to see what will be better for us in the long run. How should I say? We have decided to forego the newsletter for this quarter in exchange for a mailer that will explain this rate change in the new bill design. We've decided these mailers should be hitting your mailbox the first week of April. That way you get them before the seminars the second, later in the month. Our road village update, I had an initial meeting with our municipal advisor, our bond counsel and engineer. A plan and next steps were determined and based off the time of year where we're starting. We are hopeful to start construction July, August. Counsel should be provided with a bond authorizing resolution at our April meeting. That's the next step we have to take here. I met with our engineer post this meeting, Mr. McDonald of HRC, and then also Tim Metz, our DPW supervisor, to look at our roadmap with the conditions and where we could start construction this season. Given that our roadmap was done three years ago and the Pacer ratings for then, and we decided that we would start with the best first. In three years, I mean, what is best first? So we tried the quadrant currently with, according to that map, that had the best, the highest numbers at that point were four. Ones are the worst, tens are the best. Our best roads are at a four. The focus at this pre-planning meeting will be the Northwest Quadrant. Please be mindful, this does not mean the whole quadrant or any, that we have any specific list of streets, as they're still being finalized. They have to come out, HRC will look at it all, determine how much money this takes. We're looking at only using 700,000 this time, so how much can we get done? That is because of the late season, we don't want to go in too much. We have determined though, that due to the probable, most likely pending building on the school lot between Chandler and Prospect, that certain portions of the streets will be tar, those portions will be targeted post the construction of that lot so that we don't fix these roads and then drive all this construction equipment back all over them. With the tree board, I did attend a tree board meeting just last week. They had their first one of this new year and they are in full planning mode for Arbor Day and are excited to dig in. And then just a few housekeeping items. We need to make sure that our sidewalks are being kept clear of snow and ice. According to our ordinance, we have 24 hours after the end of the snowfall or precipitation, whatever you call the slush we're having right now, to get this done. We have many residents, students, and our mail carriers that walk our sidewalks all year long. So let's please be considerate of them and their safety. And while you are walking these snow and ice free sidewalks, please remember to clean up after your pets. These are the seemingly small things that actually make quite a big impact on our enjoyment of our village. And then lastly, a thank you to Parks and Rec and our Romeo United Methodist Church for opening their doors to our residents just last week in order to keep them warm while the power was out. It just took a couple of phone calls and everybody absolutely send them over. So thank you to them. That's my report.
My turn.
I have recently been selected to be a part of the Michigan Municipal League's Legislative Committees. On February 9th, I had gone to Lansing for orientation for all of the committee members. I have been appointed to the Municipal Services Committee. This is a two-year commitment with scheduled meetings occurring every other month. I am looking forward to serving on this committee that will help my community as well as villages across Michigan. The orientation consisted of a guided tour of the Capitol Building and recognition from the House of Representatives as they were starting their session after their lunch break. On Thursday, February 16th, I attended the SEMCOGS Transportation Council meeting in Detroit. One of the focuses on the agenda was repairs of bridges throughout our county and beyond. I did not see any repairs to bridges on M53 in our area at this time. And that's all I have.
Okay, trustees. Nathan? Shelley?
Yep. I was not present for December's meeting. I was ill and thank you to the many people who wished me well. I am much, much better. Thank you. Or excuse me, January's meeting. I was here for December. A couple of things happening. I am on the Romeo Parks Citizen Task Force. And we have our first meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 2:00 at Kesar Library. If anyone would like to join, you're welcome to attend. We have a board that's been appointed and this will be our first meeting, but residents are welcome to be there. I have also been scheduled to begin different citizen planner courses in April and I'm looking forward to that. And thank you to the village, Romeo Parks and Rec, Nathan, and our church. We worked quickly when the power went out and people were cold and pieces came together quickly and we did have some people come to warm up and have coffee. quickly, and we did have some people come to warm up and have coffee. So happy to be a part of that.
That's it. Matt?
Nope, nothing here.
Justin?
Nothing, unless you want me to go for planning real quick, but.
Good.
Yeah, so we did have a planning meeting last month, this month? Yeah, this month. And then the next one's this Thursday. Actually, it's coming up quick. We looked at 180 South Main, request for rezoning into central business, and we just didn't see how that would fit, so we recommended not moving forward with that. And then, but we are looking at the mixed use that we brought up last month at the planning level and working with the planner, trying to get some definition put together for what we think mixed use should look like. So that's where we're at with that.
Mixed use, central business district, industrial?
Mixed use, I think on our zoning map, if I'm correct, is pretty much just the south end. Megan, you might, no.
It will depend on what you guys choose, but usually CBD, the office, doing some mixed uses between the two, so it's not cut and dry that you have to be this over here or that.
The office district, so the south end. I guess we could do definitions to include other areas, but I don't think that was originally on our zoning, our master plan. I have nothing.
Nothing? Okay. And treasurer does not have a report this month. Committee reports, our Bruce Seward. I have not heard anything from Bruce, so we're still.
Nor have I.
Well, Supervisor Philbrook, I was calling the president, sorry. He did reach out. He asked if we could get a meeting put together. He was looking to do something quickly. It was last, last week, and there was just no time to get something. He called me on Tuesday, one, some Thursday. So we're, he was going to look probably something this coming month if we, I told him to reach out to your office to see if you can make some availability.
Guess we'll see.
Keep going.
Our crosswalk project subcommittee.
So, yeah, we met on this, walked all the crosswalks, took a lot of notes. And we had some initial, more of like a pre-planned print that you had found. The committees has requested the complete working prints or bid prints that were used for the project and the price sheeting that went with those, so we could look in a little further with grades and stuff and compare them to what was done and what was bid for that project, because there's a handful of concerns that we probably should address sooner than later, but we wanted to finish putting all the information together before we made a complete presentation.
Yeah, that's about it. And we're going to confer with legal as far as see what's, what wasn't followed per the contract and look for any reimbursement if we can get it.
Was anything ever discussed about the, in front of the Mason's place, or the slope of the?
In front of the Elks, or the? In front of the Masonic. Yeah, we went over and we discussed a lot of different options there. And originally, some of us thought that that planner wasn't originally part of the bed or to that size. It looks like it might have been, but just the way it fell into the, where the slope could have went, so there wasn't so much of a drop-off and so steep. So that was one, one area we looked at. The other one was.
Look at the spec, see what was written up and see how it was basically written up.
Looks like they fixed a spot in front of Tara's place, the birdbath that was taken care of.
Was that, was that in the spec also?
And that invoice has been sent.
Yeah, and I think he paid for part of that.
So I know there were some concerns, I think, in front of the four corners. There was a step there that was pretty high that was repoured, and then across the street at the church also. That slope there is pretty, pretty dangerous, so.
Okay. I have a box of stuff that you guys are welcome to go through.
Oh, you got some stuff? Awesome.
Christine left a box of, yeah. Welcome.
Thanks. Thank you.
Moving into unfinished business, we have our rezoning request from 102 Church Street. Provided in here, we talked about this last month. Ms. Rep called me asking, could we reconsider it? I said we can throw back on the agenda. So I included in here all the emails. She put her specific request in here.
Madam President, I had a conversation with, with our legal regarding the recommendation by the Planning Commission and then what your thoughts were when you talked to me. And Mr. Clark, regarding the rezoning of what the Planning Commission recommended to the board here, your best shot as far as the procedure which we should follow, I know it's our decision, but.
Right. I just want to back up and make sure that I'm understanding correctly. I believe the Planning Commission held a public hearing. Proper notice was sent out. People were allowed to appear. The reason I ask that or start there is because.
Can you turn your mic on?
The Planning Commission is required to have a public hearing. This body's not required to. You may have a public hearing on the rezoning, but you're not required to. The Planning Commission is. And so if that function was properly followed, then your recommendation now before this board, you have the legal authority to grant the rezoning to do that. The question I have in terms of good governance, if you will, is if you do it conditionally and then the combination is not approved by Bruce Township, which has the, does the assessing for the village and that part of the village, then you're in another world. It's highly unlikely they wouldn't approve the combination, but if they, if they don't approve it, if you approve the rezoning conditioned on that approval and that never occurs, or it doesn't occur when you think it's going to, you've put the property in another world, and I recommend against that. I, I think if the Planning Commission's intent was that the rezoning not be granted until the parcels were combined, then I think that precondition should be met.
That's a cleaner way to go. Thank you.
Okay, well, can make a motion, or we made a motion last month. This was a.
To table, right?
A request, so.
Just to table it.
Well, it already is, per last month.
Well, the.
Have the lots been joined?
Not yet. They did provide this documentation that there's, they're in the process, and the email today, I can read for you. Just following up as promised, related to our request for the village Board of Trustees to vote tonight to approve the 102 Church Street to be included in the Central Business District. See below email correspondence with Bruce Township Assessing. A status update on combination of 102 Church Street parcels. Kristen Rolfs of Bruce Township Assessing has confirmed that the application is filled out correctly for the combination of parcels and requested we bring in every, everything once we had for the survey. The physical survey is complete. Our check is written and application is ready to submit to Bruce Township. The only item pending is the survey documents. These should be received by Wednesday. We will bring all documents required plus the payment to Bruce Township Assessing as soon as we have the survey drawing in our hands. Then from there, it could take up to 30 days with the Macomb County to complete the combination. I hope you find our sincere efforts to get this completed in a timely fashion satisfactory, and you can take a vote tonight. We can make a motion or you can stand.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this rezoning request tonight as presented.
This is one against legal's recommendation.
Do you want to make it pending the lots joining?
Sounds like that's going to happen, but yes, pending lots joining, so that they can get this out of the way.
That's what.
It sounds like it's going to happen.
That's what the Planning Commission sent to us, pending lots joining. So it's the same thing, isn't it?
I just take the bigger concern with our legal telling us to not go that way.
Yes. Well, I don't know. I'm sorry. I apologize. Megan, it's your call.
Yeah, have at it.
We're a little disappointed, and we feel as though you really don't want us to be here, and maybe you don't want it to be an event space. Please just share with us, because we have other opportunities. We've had a couple churches approach us. Jeff has a builder's license, and we could keep it R1 and move to something different with the property. We've had offers for another church has offered to purchase it. One church is in a lease right now and has asked us to wait to purchase it. If you don't want it to be part of the Central Business District, just be honest with us. I know, Zach, you had made a mention to Jeff at the first Planning Commission meeting before it started, that maybe we could consider buying the Zaco property and allow the village to purchase the church from us. If that's really the intent here, please share. Please share, because we don't understand where this is going. I've, I'm in a contingency. I disagree with Mr. Clark. I've sat on boards, and if it's contingent upon approval, if we don't do it, there's zero risk to the township. So at no time did anybody make clear to us that we had to have Bruce Township's approval. So now we're coming here again, and now we have to have Bruce Township's approval. So, I mean, what is it, guys? Like, just tell us. If you don't want us to continue on with the church, we thought that we were saving the church. We were saving the bell, telling everybody that we are going to make an event space out of it. The Planning Commission, when we, when we came to pre-planning, we told you that that's what we were going to use it for. When we went to the Planning Commission, we told you that that's what we were going to use it for. Is there something more that meets the eye here? Because I'm seriously confused, and it doesn't seem like you guys are willing to support us. And if you're not, just tell us, because we can do something different.
Well, can I speak? Well, can I speak? Well, I supported you, and I still am supporting you. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was to get your ducks in the roll. You have my vote for the Central Business District, but get your paperwork first. I mean, that's, that's where I'm sitting at.
Okay.
And I think that's what legal said, too, because we are representing the village, and you are in the village, and appreciate the efforts of what you're trying to do, but we don't want to circumvent the process, and that's where I'm at.
Okay, well, I disagree that that's your intent, because, and I, and I disagree again with Attorney Clark. There is zero risk to this board. If we don't get approved by Bruce Township, if they vote it down, it's done. It's done. It's, there's no risk to anybody on this board if it's not approved. It seems like there's more than meets the eye here, so I think that we're going to have to make some other decisions on what to do. Because if we don't have your support now, what's it going to be like when we are going to the Planning Commission? Are you guys supporting businesses, or are you not? When we go to the Planning Commission, then what? What kind of hoops do we have to go through? We spent $625,000. We spent the $1,200 to have the property surveyed to combine it into one. We've done everything that you've asked us to do, so I don't understand what the risk is. And I would really like for Mr. Clark to weigh in a little bit more on this, because I've sat on boards where there's been contingencies, and there's no risk. If we don't do it, we're not included.
I don't think, to Zach's point, I don't think we're against it. I think it's just that we're asking you to combine the lots first and come back with the paperwork.
But I think that's what Nate's motion was for.
Correct. They've done everything that they can possibly do, including writing a check and having that ready. I think that it's only reasonable that we should support him on this by, with the contingency of them combining the lots, having that done.
I think in light of our village attorney suggesting we don't, it would be a concern for me, Nate. But we also, I believe you speak for the Planning Commission, and it was unanimous that everybody supported this project.
Correct.
It's just that they need to follow the same process that everybody else would and follow the recommendations and the requests. If you veer for one, you have to veer for all, is my understanding. Is that what's happening? And so we want to just follow protocol.
That was a recommendation from the Planning Commission, to join the lots contingent upon the lots being joined.
Okay. And that's about 30 days away. Is that correct, according to your letter?
Yes, that's about 30 days away, but at the same time, we also have, we literally have multiple people who have asked to book it, and every month that we're sitting here waiting is just drawing out more time before we're approved to be able to move forward. So, and also just to state that I did talk to Lisa, who was the one who made the motion, and I don't think that she's in concurrence with that. She felt that her motion, contingent upon making the four parcels into one, she didn't think that there would be a reason why the board would not approve us to move forward. So I'm, I'm just not really sure what the intent is by this board right here and what the roadblock is.
So if you, let's pretend it doesn't go through.
Mm-hmm.
So you cannot book your events.
Well, have to go to the Planning Commission and go through pre-planning, which, I mean, according to Lisa, could take some, several months. So it's putting us and delaying us even further. We have someone who wants to book for June, someone who wants to book for August, someone who wants to book for November 11th, and the longer you guys hold us up, there's absolutely no reason. We've put the money up. Everything's ready to go.
I don't think we're holding you up. I think we're trying to follow fair procedure for everybody. I, I personally would do the same for anybody else. It, we have to be consistent with our procedure. The Planning Commission has supported it. I don't think any of us are not supporting it, but just so you understand.
We just saw this for the first time last month, I think, and we were just going based on what legal and planning, planning at the time had recommended, and we've got it back now. So I didn't think we were going to see this back until things were joined together.
Right. Well, Ms. Rep wanted us to consider it, and I told her we'd put it on there. I mean, there's no, nothing, no harm in requesting it.
Well, there was a motion on the floor.
Have we discussed it enough? Are we all good?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you call the roll, please?
Well, there was a motion, but I did not get a support.
I'll support.
Thank you.
Okay, and the motion, please read.
To approve the.
Res zoning?
Res zoning as presented pending the lots joining.
So, and Mark, your recommendation as our legal counsel is to wait.
Well, if you approve the motion, which you're entitled to do, I don't mean to answer a question with a question, but I have to start somewhere. What is the property zoned?
Property zoned R1.
Right. And so until the lots are combined, it's going to remain R1. And if the lots aren't combined, it's going to remain R1. And while I'm very concerned and sensitive to people expending money in planning and going forward with things, if monies are accepted, improvements are made, and the zoning never comes to fruition, then that's going to be problematic, not for the village, but it's going to be problematic for the property owner. And the, the Bruce Township doesn't have to approve the use. That's not what's going on here. It's simply the assessor combining the parcels as the Planning Commission recommended. So what you're doing is saying you'll have your zoning when the combinations occur, but even if you approve this motion, the property's not changing zoning tonight. That's not going to happen. And so if the parcels are never combined, as I mentioned, I think it puts the village in kind of another world. And the, the council's not at risk, the community's at risk. You're responsible for the zoning and land use in the community.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, could you call roll, please, Catherine?
Rethalum, you?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Fowler?
No.
President Poznanski?
No.
Rosso?
No.
Motion fails, two to four.
Okay. Moving into our tree board appointment, we had an appointee not accept our appointment, so I have for you.
Still form, procedure.
Ms. Lisa Taylor is who I am recommending for this open seat to the tree board. Included her letter for you.
Not David Miller?
No, Lisa Miller, or Lisa Taylor. Can I get a motion to approve the appointment?
Is this another crony?
Yes, Matt, that's exactly.
That's pretty low, Matt. I mean, come on, we need to sit here and do, throw that out.
She's throwing out a.
They're going the same thing.
She's throwing out a perfectly.
Can I get a motion?
This is your appointment for tree board?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion by Fowler, second by Parker. Motion by Fowler, second by Parker.
Could you call the roll on it?
Fowler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rosso?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
No.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Edwards?
No.
Motion carries forty-two.
Thank you. Moving to our trustee appointment, we still have this vacant seat included for you. All of the letters last month, there was one addition of somebody throwing their hat in the ring. That would be Lisa Hall. And then there was a couple, one more letter of recommendation. That was the only change to what you guys were given this month regarding the trustee appointment.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nolan Care as he was the fourth highest vote getter.
Support.
Any discussion?
Well, I think as the fourth highest vote getter, he, that's what the people spoke about. That's what the people want.
Can I ask, Matt, why you didn't support the fourth highest vote getter when you filled Christine's seat?
I don't remember that.
I'm just asking.
Was it right there?
I'm not saying it was or wasn't. And Zach was wrong when he spoke that I was the fourth vote getter because I was not. It was someone else that time.
But he didn't run.
But she still picked Mr. Seidel personally.
He also didn't run. Could you please call the roll, Catherine?
Edwards?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Rosso?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Vote is three-three, which is a tie. Motion fails.
I would like to throw out Lisa Hall, who put her name in. We've made motions for everybody else. I think Lisa's well qualified. I think she would do good for the village. She did not run. But I would like to make a motion to appoint Lisa Hall to this trustee position. No second?
Motion dismissed.
Any other motions? Okay, we stay with six trustees for another month.
Without the motion, though, can I ask, I know some of the people on the board have worked with Lisa on different committees, so if I may, just hear some words from you about her. Anyone who have worked with her?
I don't know her.
You don't know her?
She's going to take a minutes.
What'd you say?
She wants to ask to fill in.
Recommendations for Lisa.
Okay, thank you.
Might I recommend that next month, we have the people vying for these seats actually stand up and speak? I could put out an email to the people, have them come and speak for themselves. I mean, I've heard a lot of why other people think they're good, but I don't even hear them fighting for their own seat. Do you?
No, and I completely agree. If I heard some of them speak, it would help me make a decision.
I mean, we fought for our seats.
I did, yeah. And I would absolutely keep an open mind to any of these if I saw them come up and speak. I would appreciate the opportunity for them to do that.
I will put an email out to all of the people. Some of them I don't think are interested any longer, but considering they put their name in, I'll continue to put that letter in there for you.
Nolan Care has already done that. He went through the whole election process.
Okay. Okay, into D now. Where are we? The confirmation of the clerk having or not having insurance slash being bonded. This was something.
That was me. I asked for that specifically in relation to the late fee that we needed to pay to Bruce Township for $37,000. And I was hoping we could find a way to recoup some of those funds. And sometimes there is an insurance or a bond that helps with that. So it was my question, does the clerk have that insurance or that bond? And it looks like in here, we received the information. And it has a little bit of specifics about how to potentially recoup funds and some definitions on how you could do that based on circumstances. So I am thinking that to help get the $37,000 back for the community that we had to pay out, that we take use of the bond that is potentially available.
So the village currently has this bond for our employees or just the person that was the employee?
Yes.
We could recoup the residence $37,000 that we paid off if we file this?
Well, there would be a little bit of a process. I mean, you obviously have to file with the insurance company and there's a timeframe involved. I think our clerk is quite capable of that. There are some definitions in here that say why or how they may pay out and it's potential that we could qualify. So instead of just continuing on, like we have the $37,000 to give away, I think we really should try to get some of it back. And that's the reason for bonds. And so why not take advantage of it and see if we can get that done?
Catherine, have you read this?
Not recently, no. But I was aware that I am bonded, yes. Me and the treasurer are bonded.
So the clerk would basically have to fill this information out and submit it to the insurance company?
I believe so, but I would think you would, you have the contact at the insurance company and could probably work with them to file a claim.
Mr. Clark, is this something that we could do or that our clerk has to do individually? Or is it, do we have to vote on this to say follow through with this?
You don't have to vote on it. If you have a claim against an insurance policy or a bond that's in place that may cover that claim, you certainly can file a claim based on the coverage. And I thought that was discussed at the December meeting, maybe? I remember too, something about that.
No, she isn't right. We can recoup the 37. Yeah, it was discussed, but there was no, there was no way out of it.
Well, December was when we brought it to pay for it. It was on the agenda to.
To make to pay the bill to Bruce Township.
And I did ask in December if we did have any type of insurance or bond and it wasn't clear, so I asked for it to be on January's agenda. I believe it didn't make it. Justin had asked about it and it was lightly addressed. But just so it doesn't fall off the radar, I asked for it again this month. There is, according to this, you have four months after acquiring the knowledge of discovery to file your claim. So I would think we would need to do it.
What part are you reading?
ASAP. On the backside of the liability and property pool paper.
I'm sitting right here. You guys are keep talking like I'm not in the room. Yes, and it was not on last month's agenda, so no, I did not address it last month. But I did reach out to our insurance representative to address the mistake that you guys so lovingly love to keep pointing out to me. And at that time, he did not say, he did say that, no, that is not covered under the insurance policy. I can further this conversation with him. But what I would like to ask the board is, you guys all voted to just go ahead and pay it without any discussion with Bruce Township. Is there any opportunity that we can even mention this to Bruce Township? You guys just went ahead and paid it with a unanimous vote. Can we at least attempt to discuss this with Bruce Township while we're, you know, bringing all my faults to the public?
Bruce sent us the letter indicating that the village failed to pay this without any communication.
At our December meeting, special meeting, I rescinded the motion which you were just talking about and asked that we send Catherine to do just what she's saying, to talk to them. They've been late with us before. We never charged them. We said, get us a check and we didn't charge them. That would have been a lot of money every time that they were late. And.
You didn't rescind the motion. It failed.
That failed, unfortunately, and we weren't able to rescind your motion.
Nathan and I were the ones who voted again.
So I made another motion that we send Catherine to Bruce Township to see what she can work out. And Parker, Fowler, Rosso, and Poznanski said no.
I was not there, Nate, at that meeting.
Okay, then I'm sorry.
So I could not have voted. And technically, we do a reconsideration vote. It can't be at a special meeting. It has to be at the next regular scheduled meeting to be official.
Well, Mr. Clark wasn't sure on that at that time and didn't have the information. So we did it anyways.
Excuse me, about what wasn't I sure?
I asked, I had asked if I could, because I know that you have to do a reconsideration vote, the following meeting.
Is that not at the next regular scheduled meeting?
But we weren't sure if it was, it could be done at a special meeting, so we just went ahead and did it.
He told you it couldn't be done.
No, we knew it couldn't be done at a special meeting. That's why I told you at the beginning, you couldn't adjust the agenda and you went and had to do it anyways.
Why did we vote on it?
We didn't. That's why I said no.
It was voted on in that special meeting to rescind. Consideration for the rescinding, that failed. That's as far as that got.
Okay, so here's my point, Catherine. I'm not trying to beat you up. I think I voted to pay it because we're responsible for it and we need to take responsibility for our actions. I never came back to say anything about, we all make mistakes. But that doesn't mean we can't try to recoup it. It doesn't mean we can't try to address it.
Right, which I don't understand why we didn't address it with Bruce Township, who's asking for that money.
I don't know. You're the one who received the letter, not me.
Why didn't you do it?
Why didn't you?
Because I was waiting for board direction and board direction said, pay it.
Catherine, she brought it to me and I.
Normally, without our authorization, you just pay the bills, right?
Yeah.
We vote to pay the bills. I make decisions every day without our.
Credit card payments.
That was outside of the contract, so it would have to be, have been brought to the board, which it was.
Right, and that's why I brought it to the board. It was too much to approve on our own, so we brought it here.
So, okay, so the line in here, Catherine, about, because there's some information about here. And I guess I'm wondering if they told you no, that contradicts some of what's written here.
I can re-present it to our contact at MML, our insurance carrier.
All right, and then maybe these specific things I highlighted, you could ask them about? Because this seems to be able to maybe address it. And then if they give us an explanation on this piece, then we know for sure, one way or the other. And that's all I'm getting at, is we're responsible for it. Let's pay it and let's see if we can get our money back. We all make mistakes. It's okay. We just want to solve it.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Sandra, do you need, do you need help out?
Somebody need to escort her?
Are you sure?
Okay, so these lines specifically, then, we can get addressed. And I don't mind. I don't feel if anyone else does that we have to come back to the board with all of this. If you know that you can ask these questions about these specific lines here, and then is everyone okay if we just come to the next meeting and she explained why these lines apparently aren't something the insurance company can honor? Because it's pretty specific.
But if they can honor, do we need a motion then to say move forward? Or can we just expect it to be done? I don't know.
I don't think we need a motion.
I can go ahead and just file a claim.
Yeah, and if they find something in here, then I think you're authorized to go ahead and start filing a claim. If not, then I would just like you to talk about how or why, so we understand what this really means or doesn't mean.
Okay. If I can address that with Mr. Clark.
Okay, thank you.
And I will put it on unfinished business.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies. We're now into new business for our police purchase. Let's jump back. Okay. Dan, would you like to, would you like to take the floor?
I presented you with a proposal to replace our handheld radios. I asked of you for this to be put into the budget last year. I had an estimate of about $25,000. I received the quotes. They're all basically the same thing except for one. Everything's under a state bid, so the prices really don't change. What a couple of these other companies did, though, they took out the extras and they charge the extra for the extras. The one company I'm suggesting, which is the Spectrum Wireless, didn't do that. They stuck with the state pricing and are about $3,000 less than everybody else because of that. Now, there's going to be some changes to the radios in the near future, but nobody can tell me when or how near. There's going to be different programming that's going to be added. It's going to be an encryption and a trunking program. They haven't decided if they're doing it or when they're doing it. If we buy these radios without that upgrade right now, we're looking probably about $10,000 less. And we can do it later. I talked to the guy and he said, yes, when it comes, we just do an upgrade to the thing. And because the whole county's going to end up doing it, the county's going to try to get a better price on it. So it might be cheaper than what we got to do right now. So my suggestion is to get basic right now, without the encryption, without the trunking, and go with Spectrum Wireless. And it is a total with the state fees that we'd have to pay, $15,403, which is far less than the $27,000 that everybody else was calling.
I'd like to make the motion that we go with Spectrum.
If you read the last page, I broke it down.
Yes, we're broke down, okay. I just wanted to verify.
Well, I was going to say Spectrum. I like what you got in here as far as the, they have the future upgrades already added in.
Yeah, well, the upgrades added in is still $3,000 less with Spectrum. But we might be able to get upgrades later when, or if they do it at a cheaper price. So I would suggest not getting them right now and neither would this.
Have we dealt with these guys before?
We borrowed some radios from them before and they had real good service. What we're talking about is a Kenwood radio instead of a Motorola's.
So you got a working relationship.
Motorola's like twice the price and you're paying for a name.
So you've tried them around the village, communities?
Yeah, we used them during Peach Festival.
There's no dead zones that we got to be concerned about?
Yeah, we had no problems with them. They're good radios. A lot of fire department choose them.
And they'll work with all our current hardware, Peters, or whatever?
These are just the handheld radios. These aren't the in-car radios or the radio in the station at all. Those are expensive and we need to do it.
So when the county upgrades, everything will integrate seamlessly?
Yes, everything will integrate into these new radios.
Awesome.
Chief, any idea about how long before they're could?
Well, to place the order, you know, that would be done tomorrow. They'd take probably a month or so to get it, but then they got to send it to the state to have it programmed. And that could take up to three months.
And how about everybody can join a, does the county give you any idea?
They haven't, they, they don't know when they're, when they're going to do the trunking or the encryption. The reason for the trunking would be to, because so many radios are coming online nowadays and everybody's using the same 800 megahertz through the whole state, that it starts jamming the system, so they bring on the second trunking. We haven't had an issue with that, but when they do go to it, I would suggest going to it. And it's, I think it was like $5,000 or something like that for the nine radios. And then the encryption, I have no idea what that does, honestly. It sounds like just an upgrade or something. But that's another $5,000. So if they can get that as a group price, you know, it might only be $3,000 at that time.
Thank you. We had a motion by Nate. Did anybody want to say?
I'll second.
For the Spectrum and the price of $15,403.44. You do roll call.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Rosso?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Next to me, move into our wastewater purchase. Al, you're up.
One of our submersible pumps break. We had a company come out do an emergency run to pull it so that they could inspect it. And we need to get it back. They put a loner in place for us. They're not charging us for that. They came back with two options. Option A is a replacement of the pump. And option B is the rebuilding, rebuilding the pump they tip with them. Option B is $8,400. For the new pump, which could actually be the pump that's in there right now, the loner, it's 92 plus the $85 for the inspection, which would be 93, 61, 52. I'd like to go with option A, buy a new pump versus the. I'd like to go with option A, buy a new pump versus the rebuild.
How long's the life of those usually?
This one sits in a very dirty well, if we get 10 years out of it, usually that's not, that's pretty good. This is, this is a really-
Option B, rebuilding, and is this, I'm assuming some reinstallation labor? Would it be beneficial to look at, I don't know if that's going to sit with us and stay with us, possibly having that rebuilt in the future? Go with option A and then have this rebuilt so that we have spares sitting there?
Yeah, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world to do.
They're not going to take it, right, that's going to stay with us, so we can look at budgeting that in the future to have that rebuilt so we have a secondary?
Yeah, we could do that.
On backup?
Certainly.
And what kind of life did we get out of this one?
I'm hoping 10 years.
No, this current one.
Oh, the current one? Oh, it was, yeah, it's about, maybe 12, we got maybe 12 out of it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, we go with option A.
I'll second. Thanks Al.
I'm sorry, roll call. Bartholomew?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
And then we have our council rules of order. I threw this in here, this, when was the last time we approved it? February of '21, so it's been a couple of years, we have new trustees, so I wanted us to have this back in here. I had a suggestion of with our agenda, we had moved into consent agenda format. However, every month we still pull everything out and separate it and then Catherine has to write all these different amendments to the minutes. So I would like us to see it put back to just literally minutes, bills, agenda, and be done with it. So we don't have to ask, "What are we pulling out, what aren't we?" and all of that, so. That is a, that is a change that I would propose along with, I added in the minutes for the different boards into our packet. I think it's good to have everyone informed of what our boards are doing. Those, wanted to make clear that those are for information only, those get voted on at their boards. This is just for us to stay in the loop of what our boards are doing. So those were the only changes that I would propose, I don't know if anybody else had any.
Catherine, is that the best way for you to break them, is there any other suggestions you have to make it?
No, that, I mean, that is a good point she made about the consent agenda. The consent agenda is supposed to be one motion, but you guys continually break it apart and pay, put it back to its three, four motions, so it'll just be easier.
Okay, anything else that would be easier?
No, actually, no at this time. Thank you.
Well, it fits in Megan, but I did add, new business, it came under E on here for the reading of an ordinance or policy. And I don't know if that would fall into our rules of procedure, or if we'd have to make a policy or ordinance for this. And maybe Mark can weigh in. I'd like to see, I've seen it done in other communities where if we have a new ordinance that we're going to adopt, and that gets brought to the Board, there's a reading of that ordinance, and then it basically sits for 30 days. So we're not trying to make last minute changes or corrections at the Board table. And then it comes back at a later date and then maybe this still got overlooked or that got overlooked. So if we did a, like a reading and then like a 30 day or until the next meeting, it sat before we made an official vote on it. I don't know, Mark, does that need to be a policy or procedure, or can that just be in our rules?
I think you can do it in your rules, the state law does not require, your charter as you will is the General Law Village Act.
Yeah.
And the General Law Village Act does not require multiple readings of ordinances. I believe townships and cities, that requirement is statutory, or if not, many of those municipalities have that type of procedure in their charter. So, I think if you wanted to as a matter of procedure, how you conduct your business, provided your rules of procedure, that, whatever that scheme is, are you going to have the ordinance presented orally or mentioned orally and then come back in writing? And, does it come back more than once? Whatever your expectation is, I think could properly be handled in your rules of procedure.
Okay, maybe I draft something, we can look at putting something in. Just like to see, I know several times since I've been on it, we're trying to make changes right here to vote on it, and it just seems kind of sketchy.
So who do you envision looking at that over the 30 days?
I hope, I hope that we would, if it was read or presented and then we had it to review, to find all the corrections or misspellings or things or whatever that might be. And then it came back again and if it was a second reading, maybe this takes two, three months before a new ordinance goes into place. I don't see why an ordinance would need to be rushed. I mean, if there's something we're going to define as law, that's going to proceed how the village operates moving forward, I don't see the reason to have it rushed.
Right, so it would just, anyone who has feedback or-
Yeah, I don't see why even residents wouldn't be able to give some type of feedback to, you know, through emails or communications that we could all address or look at why we're adopting new ordinances.
Makes sense.
Just like, so yeah, I didn't know if that was separate, or if we could throw it in with the rules, or if we needed to draft a separate ordinance for that. Would or would not follow that ordinance, I don't know.
You can do it by ordinance, I think you can also do it based on your rules of procedure. However you do it, you just stating the obvious, you need to follow whatever it is you decide to do.
Yeah.
You don't want to honor it in the breach, you want to, and I think you could provide for that in your rules of, if these are entitled rules of order, I think you can do that. You could do it by ordinance as well, to say, here's the ordinance that tells us how we're going to adopt ordinances, you can do that as well.
Anyone else have any thought or input on that?
I think it's a good idea. I think rules of procedure, adding it in here would be fine, I don't think you have to go farther than that.
I think it's fine the way it is, but I want to make the change, I don't know.
I, I think I like having it specifically set out that you have to let it stew for a while.
Yeah, so.
It just seems to me that we'll probably run into trouble somewhere along that. I can't think of an instance offhand.
Yeah, I mean, I, since I've been on, I've seen the situation go where we would have sat and taken the time. And I don't think we would have ran into some hiccups that we've had since I've been on.
I mean, I guess you're only going to run into more frustrated people, we just saw frustrated people with the current due process and you're adding more due process, other than aggravation. I see where you're trying to look out.
Cool.
A lot of times communication and education are just all people need to understand.
So if you would like to get to us, an explanation of that, we can get it in our rules of procedure? We'll bring it back next month to, so we can all see it all and have it with those, my suggestions, Justin's suggestions and, so we won't make, make no more, yeah, let's table it till next month, or should we make a motion to bring it back next month pending the?
You guys can do that?
I'll give you a second.
What would you like?
You just made that motion?
We'll do that.
Yep.
Bring it back with additions, adjustments, whatever you want to call it, and we will relook at it for consideration at that time.
You mean a roll call or all in favor?
All in favor is good.
Aye.
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 Our accounting services, we had made a motion, I included, are we good? We're all clear with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Included for you the minutes from June of '22 where we, let me see, retained the accounting services from Plant Moran for 12 months. That 12 months is coming up on June of '23, I wanted us to be aware of this. And, I put in here our current contract with them and take the next steps. I would like to see us going out for bid, whether or not we stay with them.
Second.
Go back out for a RFP, get our bids in and make a decision from there. In the past, we've had hired single individuals, as in, one person to do our stuff for us contracted on the side. This is a company, I don't know if we have a preference either way.
I've been quite pleased with Plant Moran. I mean, I was pleased before, I mean, usually, used to be like the clerk administrator used to do it. And then, or we had an accountant there that helped. But, and then we had the single person, that improved things a whole big step. And I think when we got Plant Moran, it was a big step forward for us.
It was also a lot more money.
Financially a big, yeah.
But, besides the point, if we want to pay for a good service, we're going to pay for a good service.
Yeah. So this says it went up 3% January 1st of this year already. Just a note, but don't-
Did you tell me what page you're on?
It was a letter, it says page nine at the bottom. The rates above will increase 3% on January 1st, 2023, and annually thereafter. So, we can assume it's now 3% higher. If we don't do anything, does this just continue to renew? Because I don't, I didn't see in here if it was ongoing unless somebody-
Well, considering the way we made the motion, we made it for 12 months.
But I mean, in Plant Moran's eyes, if we don't do anything, they'll just keep running.
We contracted, we contracted them for 12 months.
Okay, and isn't it part of our policy and procedure to put things out for proposal?
Yeah, that's why I'm suggesting that.
Okay.
That, I mean, this, we had a crossover of people leaving, timing, we needed somebody, Plant Moran stepped in.
So you don't need a motion, you just follow through with it, with our procedures?
We need a motion to go out there.
Yeah, just so that we have it all in our minutes and everything's documented, let's make a motion to go out for bid for accounting services.
I'll second. Do we have anything else coming up?
Yes, we, Catherine and I sat down the other day to try and figure out what month we need to start everything. We have garbage coming up, that one's ends in November.
Yes, that ends.
So we were talking about putting that on, did we say the May agenda?
May, I believe it was, yes.
To talk about the RFP at that point.
Okay.
So yeah, so that we're not, there's no laps and that we're not behind. Those are the only two we ta, legal is good. Auditors were good, because those were just done, I think that has one more year, who else did we talk about?
Video's okay right now.
Yeah, that one was renewed last year and tech, or SYO. We needed to confirm with that one. But we're trying to keep track of, yeah. Okay, um, do you need, all in favor? You want a motion? Aye?
Aye.
I'm a name.
You're a name?
Yes.
Okay, so we talked about the ordinance already. We have discussion of having committee task force updates.
Yeah, that was me too. So we have at least nine different committees out there, or task force and all kinds of things. And I was hoping that we could find some systematical way to just get updates from them every now and then, not all nine every month. But, some type of schedule so that we can be abreast of what's going on. We have streets, DDA, planning, ZBA, sidewalks, HDC, cemetery, the trees. So, it doesn't seem to be any real consistent pattern on getting updates. So is, I would like to see that happen, that we have some kind of consistent pattern of updating. So do I need to make a motion for that, or how do we?
What would be your suggestion? As part of putting the minutes in there, so I guess that's scratching the surface of a literal report, or is a person coming and reporting? What else would you?
I would say, after each one of their meetings, maybe submitting something? Do they automatically all submit something after?
Well, they submit draft minutes, so what will happen is we'll end up with minutes from, so we're in February, we had January minutes, because those were approved, that's what we put in here.
Okay, but let's say, let's say the tree commission goes like nine months without meeting and nothing happens. How do we know that, how do we help keep it on track? Is there?
So not just getting minutes, you're thinking having a more regularly scheduled meetings for the different committees or?
Well, no, I think they can schedule their own, but let's just say they don't meet for nine months, is anyone going to notice? Like, or does it just fall off? You know, something where we know when they're supposed to meet or what's going on, or we get little reports. I'm sure the people of the community would want to hear what's going on.
I know we have, let's talk about who we have on, we have a member on almost every board. Close. I mean, Catherine would be cemetery. Justin, you're planning. Where else are we, ZBA?
That's me.
You. Task force. You. What else do we have?
Trees.
Tree, we don't have one.
Historic district.
HDC, I mean Caroline attends them and does the minutes, so she could kind of, during her report time, do that I guess.
Okay, our residential sidewalks. Our DDA, our street administrator.
I do the DDA as the liaison, that's what I try to include in my report.
Okay. So-
I just know, like, like you're saying, you don't want them to, all of these people, all of the chairs to come and report at every single meeting, that is a bit overwhelming.
No.
So just trying to be creative and how would you suggest, what else?
What if we made some type of schedule like quarterly or, or if something major happens or new plans or, I'm not sure. I guess I'm kind of new to this, but I'm finding there's a lot of moving parts that might be.
Yeah, we're having new meetings at the office to help all of the conversations continue between all the departments and elected and supervisors, yeah, so. There's a lot of moving parts to keep track of.
Right, so I guess I would look to you guys internally too, because you know, you know what you have going on and you know who's reporting and how often and, but somehow, or if you want, I can make a spreadsheet and just say, "This is when you have to report."
I think the idea of quarterly is good, to say check in every, at least every three months?
Yeah.
I, would you want a chair?
I was going to say it's problematic to have a liaison for each, each board. Something I might have heard from the-
Each committee.
Right.
On each committee, and then that trustee asks them to hasten whatever process they're on. And if they have something significant that needs to be reported, then they can come back here and say, "We have somebody, we're going to have them come in on this meeting." Whenever there's something significant. I've heard a couple of times, "I didn't hear anything from somebody." Well, somebody should be proactively reaching out if you want, if they're on your, your agenda. Why doesn't somebody reach out to them and say, "We're going to be discussing this, what's the update?", rather than waiting for them possibly to come to you.
I don't think we've had a problem though with this, have we?
I mean, I understand more information, Clark.
Let me insert a little in here, because I'm on, I'm on the tree committee and I'm also on the heart committee. You know, what's, what's happened on the tree committee is that you're supposed to have monthly meetings. And those monthly meetings are supposed to be taking notes and given to the clerk and posted on your website. That hasn't happened. And what should, all that has to happen is that these individual committees and task force ought to post their, be mandatory that they post their minutes. It hasn't, so what's happened on the tree committee is that minutes haven't been posted for the last year. And we're digging a hole trying to get out of it to figure out what was going on. So you have to enforce, and it says it's in their bylaws enough, that they're supposed to have their minutes posted. It's not being done. So just enforce that rule.
Well, that's.
It's all you have to do.
I can speak to that. If I was given minutes to post on the website, I would put them on the website. Correct. I'm not guessing.
I can't find.
I would gladly post them if I had them.
They're now, just going forward.
I'm telling you, they haven't been posted and they should be. Enforce the rule of the committee chairman as they have to do it.
Sure.
And you have a, you have a liaison that should enforce the chairman to do that.
Yeah, for. For example, the HDC met just last week and I received an email this morning from Caroline passing the minutes on to us. Immediately saved them, posted them with our new software onto our documents on demand. You could go right on and read them right now.
So can we have a tab on the website for each one of these different committees with just the minutes that are in there? And if you want to know what's happening?
That is where our new software is coming. Absolutely.
Yeah, so if you want to know what's going on with tree, you click on tree. You want to know what's going on with cemetery?
Each, each, um, commission, board, whatever you call it, has a tab. You have an agenda, minute, and packet. You even, this whole, everything we're looking at right now, you could look at online along with us, finally. Um, and trying to do that with all the boards is everyone passes them on, yes. So going forward, we are correcting this. But again, to your point, you're asking for a literal come here and speak.
Well, no, if we could get all this on the website, anyone can reference it. I think that's great. Um, and then we just need to know who's in charge of each one of these, maybe list them on the website. And if it's not updated, how do we follow up? That's all. I think that's great if each one can be listed there. Because there's a lot that's not there. And it sounds like you guys are working on it, so can we include these bits and pieces? And then, um, yeah, it'll all be there.
Follow up with me in an email, um, if there's a literal, if there's a board on there you're not seeing.
Okay.
Let me know. Yep.
And.
We do this every day, so sometimes we list off things and we don't see it.
Can we also list when they're anticipated to meet? Like cemetery meets every other month, Tuesday at two or whatever. So that when we, I pull up tree and look, I know when their next meeting is. If I want to go, I can go. Have the basics for people to function. Okay.
Yeah, and if you think of a more informative at a meeting idea, what, I mean, press on.
Oh yeah, I'd make them all come quarterly, but you all don't want to sit here for that. Okay, thank you. Thanks for entertaining my thought process. I just want to get everybody informed and.
I agree.
I like it.
Information out there and.
Okay, hold on, I have two agendas because one was wrong. I'm trying to go up one. Um, we had our information only and now we had the addition of the president's salary. Matt?
Okay. I got a letter from one of your voters, actually Nathan and I both did. And one of the points she's making here is in regards to your salary. It's just one of the reasons why she voted for you. Ms. Pozniewski has been working, uh, I don't even want to start there. She's stated that she would save the village money and many times debated and criticized the former president about her pay, pay raise. Along with Mr. Parker, Mr. Fowler. Excuse me. People voted for Ms. Pozniewski because of this and because she said she would not take the salary. If she had been taking this salary from day one, then shame on her for lying to the people of Romeo and those who supported her. Hopefully these rumors are not true. She's proposing that we make a motion to reduce your salary tonight, but I think that would be illegal. Any comment? These are one of your voter, they voted for you because you said you were going to save the money. And you criticized Ms. Melzon so much.
About seventeen thousand dollars by not taking the insurance.
That's not what this is addressing.
I, I don't recall you saying you wouldn't take a salary, did you?
She criticized Ms. Melzon over and over and over. And this is one of your voters. This is the people that met you on Tad Siglo's lot and things like that.
And what was her name?
It was sent anonymously because of the, um, record.
Because of the record, I didn't receive it, I'm in possession of that same letter.
Oh, are you?
And people are afraid to speak out because they're afraid they're going to be tagged by the ra, or the record. Whether that's legitimate or not, I don't know.
So Matt, this person is saying Megan said she wouldn't take a salary?
That she would take the salary that Ms. Melzon was getting, that she would reduce her salary on day one.
Okay.
If the council, if that's what the council wanted to do, I believe my statement is if that's what the council wanted to do, that's what the coun, I would accept that.
No, the council can only do it at times of election.
Well, that's not what happened in the past.
No, I think this is something we can bring up during budgets and address.
These are people that voted for you.
So if it could only be done at election time, Matt, how could I have changed it on day one?
These are people that voted for you. You could actually return. They're not my statements. They're your voters.
Oh, I think what you just said is that it can only happen during an election for us to do it, right? So how did it happen then?
I think so.
But you, you guys voted Christina Reis, right? The other, the past president, outside of an election, it happened during her current administration.
Well, then maybe it can happen.
Yeah, I don't know the legalities of it.
Well, maybe Justin's right. Maybe it can happen.
Look at it during the budget and address it.
So you're open to changing it any time you want?
I will take whatever salary this council gives me and I will do all the duties that it takes to do it.
This person is asking you to do it voluntarily. This person is asking you, because that's what you told them you would do.
You would like a mother of three children to send my kids to school so I could go to work somewhere for free. So that somebody else could watch my children while I get no money and spend over forty hours a week working for you.
You made commitments to your voters.
I did not say that, Matt.
You through Nathan and I for some reason.
Yeah, that, that, that's very questionable.
That's why I gave you a copy of it also.
Okay, well, I don't, not going to do a job for free.
So when you're making campaign promises and you're criticizing other people about what they're making.
Could you point to a time that I literally said that?
She's telling you this.
Oh, but I thought she said at the end that she hopes the gossip she hearing isn't true. So are you sure she didn't hear that through gossip?
That goes on about you being part-time versus full-time.
Is there anything to be done here?
I wanted you to be aware of what's.
Well, thank you, Matt. That was so kind of you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to be made?
No, there's not.
Okay. Um, we will be entering closed session at this time.
Before we go into closed session, I'll just want to say something from the record here. Mrs. Trapp indicated that, uh, she got information from me, we heard Zaco's, well, in September, Bill Park and I had a conversation about Zaco's property.
Is this something that should be done in closed session?
No, it's, it's set on the mic. I just want to put the record just to clear that up.
What, I heard my name?
That's when I got the information from Bill Park.
Not Miss Trapp, Miss Rad.
I'm sorry, Miss Trapp, I'm Miss Rad. I apologize.
Calm down, Catherine.
We got March and May and.
You are way too high alert. So do you want a motion to go into closed session?
I need a motion and a roll call vote to go into closed session.
Can we have, I will make a motion to go into closed session.
Pozniewski?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Russell? Oh, she carries six zero. Oh, she carries 6-0.